Pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of 2025, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to watch or listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. Video conference, this login information, the agenda on the town website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be available, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Topsfield website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And so I'm delighted to call this meeting to order, and I have one more announcement that I have to read. This meeting is being recorded via Zoom in the event that the connection is lost at any time during the meeting. The meeting is also being recorded by Topsfield Cable TV and will be available on the Topsfield website cable video on demand page. Is there anyone else present who wishes to record the meeting? That said, okay, thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda, Three Hill Street, requires a special permit application. And we need a super majority for that. I would like to take up the next item first so that we can move forward. Because if Steve doesn't join us tonight, we're simply going to have to do a continuation or something of that meeting. So if you can be patient, we can move on to the second item on the agenda, which is 106 South Main Street, and that is a continuation of a public hearing for a stormwater management and erosion control permit. It is my understanding that we now have clearance from our consulting engineer, that everything has been approved to his satisfaction. So that, of course, typically means that we are happy to follow his advice. Other members of the board, Zilly and Jenny, do you have any comments or questions about this? No, Zilly shaking her head.
I don't.
And Jenny doesn't. So I think it would be appropriate if someone makes a motion that we approve the stormwater and erosion control permit for 106 South Main Street. Finally, Alex, would someone make that motion, please?
Ms. Chair, would you like to close the public hearing first?
Oh, very good. Thank you. Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second? Second, okay, all in favor, roll call, Zilly?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
And I say aye. Okay, and now can we have a motion to approve the permit?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Jenny, second, all in favor, Jenny?
Aye.
Zilly?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Congratulations, you're all set. Good luck with your project.
Thank you all. I appreciate all the effort and time.
Okay, thanks, Alex, and good luck.
You take care.
Okay.
Good thing.
Okay, I'm going to ask Jenny, what is your thought about our Hill Street? Should we be opening this hearing?
No. And then continuing, if Steve can't join?
Yeah. I've been trying to reach Steve. He may be unreachable.
He said he was going to come. I don't know why he's not here.
We can wait, we have another.
Let's wait a little longer.
Okay, we'll wait another moment or two. Okay, the next one is the continuation of the public hearing for a stormwater management and erosion control permit at 256 Boston Street. And I'm happy to report, I think you've seen this, that our consulting engineer, after going back and forth and reviewing numerous items and issues, they finally has agreed that this is good to go. Is that the case, Lynn?
Yes, that was Beals Associates, our peer reviewer. And we have Todd Maury with us tonight if there are any questions.
Any questions about it? No?
I suppose I have a question. I'm sorry, this is Abigail Powell.
Okay.
I'm sorry, is it open to comment from the public?
Certainly, you can certainly join the conversation.
I'm just curious about what the next steps would be if the, should, after approving the permit.
Oh, well, the next step, once we've done it, they do have a septic plan that's been approved. And this is a stormwater permit that would be approved. I don't know whether they have a building permit yet. Typically, they wouldn't. But if they do, then it will be up to the property owner to determine when and how to proceed. But all the permitting will have been done. You know, leading up to a building permit.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. I don't know whether anyone can answer this. I do have a question about the rain garden. Brendan, you're nodding.
Yep, I was letting you finish.
Yeah, well, I generally have questions about rain gardens because they work where there's, you know, regular maintenance, you know, and sort of commercial properties or that kind of thing. My only concern for homeowners is that down the road, do they really know that that's a rain garden and are they going to maintain it as a rain garden? I mean, do you have any comments about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think I would echo that concern with wherever a stormwater BMP is put in place, commercial or private. My understanding is that the operation and maintenance plan will continue on with the property and will be associated with the deed, so whenever this property, if it changes hands going forward, to answer your question, that is all a part of the package that comes along with the property. So whoever maintains ownership, should it change hands, they are fully aware of what the expectation and what the requirements are of maintaining that rain garden.
Perfect.
And that's the same should be said for the Kultek infiltration systems as well.
Perfect, you have reassured me, you know. I always have visions of future owners saying, oh, I don't like that. I'm going to rip it apart and put in peonies and roses or something, you know, on kind of different purpose, you know. But anyway, as long as that's all set, any other questions from anyone? Zilly, Jenny?
That's a good question. I'm glad you asked.
Yeah. Nothing else. I like that question.
Nothing else? Okay. Well, again, we have now received confirmation from our, the peer review engineer that this is going to work and this is great, so we should go forward and issue the permit. We have to close this public hearing. Could I have a motion to that extent, that effect?
I moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Jenny, second, okay, all in favor? Aye, Zilly?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Great, okay, now can we have a motion, you know, to issue a stormwater management and erosion control permit for 256 Boston Street? Yes. Thank you.
Second.
Very good, and I will remind everyone that that typically means that the standard conditions are, you know, attached to that permit relative to the the septic system being resolved according to the plan and any of our other standard conditions. Okay, so now we need a vote, all in favor, Zilly?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, so there you go, 256 Boston Street. Jennifer, I see you're there. You're all set.
Thank you so much. It's a relief. Thank you all.
Very good. Well, good luck with the project. And it's taken quite a long time, you know, to get.
It's been a while. And I will be continuing the application. It hasn't been approved yet, that was the question. But we have worked with the building department and we just will conclude it now. We were waiting for the stormwater to be approved.
Right, well, the stormwater is now approved, so you can, you know, you don't need to come back to us. You always do it that way.
She was answering Abigail's, it sounded like she was answering Abigail's question, maybe.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, well, now, we have a public hearing. Yeah, I'm still hoping that maybe Steve can connect because that, you know, our scenic road requires a super majority vote, I guess. Lynn, could you read the public hearing notice for 49 Asbury?
Sure, the following was published in the Salem News July 14th and 21st. Notice is hereby given that the Topsfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing during a Zoom planning board meeting Wednesday, August 6th at 7:00 PM. Instructions will be on the posted agenda for how to join the meeting via Zoom to consider the application of the 49 Asbury Street Realty Trust. Premises located at 49 Asbury Street, Topsfield. Requesting a special permit under chapter 220 of the general bylaws Stormwater Management and Erosion Control. Martha A. Morrison, Chairman, Topsfield Planning Board.
Okay, is there someone here? Yes, Sean from Griffin Engineering.
Yes, how you doing?
Fine, how are you? Would you like to talk about your project?
Sure, yeah, so this is 49 Asbury Street. I'll share my screen here if this works, let's see. You guys see that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I'm here on behalf of Landmark Utilities and Site Excavation as the applicant there. This is a single-family residence being constructed at 49 Asbury Street. As you can see here is the project locus. You got the Ipswich River on the left here, Bradley Palmer State Park on the right, Asbury Street on the right. It's a beautiful piece of property. It's right now, it's vacant, just grassland pasture. I'll put the plan here. So it's a nice house going in, driveway right off of Asbury Street. Obviously, this is for stormwater permit, so you know, we're handling stormwater. There's a kind of a high point at the center of the property here. We have stormwater that flows towards Asbury Street and stormwater that flows back towards the Ipswich River. So we've kind of accommodated the stormwater at the two areas. We have infiltration field going in, in the driveway area here, and then another one out back to capture roof runoff from the proposed barn in the single-family residence. It's a septic system out front, which kind of limited our abilities to put something in that spot, but I think we were able to work around it and, you know, provide infiltration up a little bit higher here. What else here? You can see we have some walls going in along the property line here. This is just to accommodate the kind of steep slope that comes up from Asbury Street. A little bit of fill going in here just to ease that slope. There was a little bit of trees in this area that had to come down, but not too much. I think this project was reviewed by MISA and they concluded that there was no incidental take on any endangered species. I think there's endangered species across in Bradley Palmer State Park and also along Asbury, sorry, Ipswich River there, but you know, we were staying out of those areas. There's a, it's going to be obviously a septic system for utilities for the septic, and then it's going to have a private well. There's an existing well on the property, but it's used for irrigation only. So I'm not going to run any water lines. That's pretty much it from this perspective. Do you guys have any questions about this?
No, our consulting engineer reviewed it and determined that this was, you know, fine, that you should be able to manage your stormwater perfectly with this plan. I will say it is a beautiful piece of property. And I happened to be driving by the other day and I thought, wow, you know, that's where it's going. It really is a lovely property and I'm sure it'll be a very nice home for a family in the future. Zilly or Jenny, do you have any questions?
I have one that's, it's a little bit more of just curiosity, but you mentioned MISA reviewed it about for the endangered species. Is there, is that something that we could see, the communication with them?
I think I might have a copy of it. Let me see if I can pull it up here.
Really more, it has nothing to do with the soil, but I'm curious.
They didn't give many details about, about, you know, what was actually in the,
Okay.
Yeah, in the priority habitat there. Let's see if we can find the response. Can you guys see that?
But.
A little small.
Yeah. So they basically said it will not result in a prohibited take on state-listed rare species.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Zilly, you can look at the habitat maps and like what's there if you go on Oliver, which is like the state GIS.
Thank you.
Right, and if one didn't, the Conservation Commission would certainly point you in that direction, you know, in the course of any review. Okay, well, this, this looks like it's ready to go. Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I moved.
And a second. Excellent, all in favor? Jenny?
Aye.
Zilly?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And now, could we have a motion to approve the stormwater management and erosion control permit for 49 Asbury Street?
So moved.
Okay.
I want to give you a chance, Jenny, but I don't know if.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Zilly?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And as I mentioned previously, there are standard conditions associated with that, specifically that the septic system be constructed according to the plan as approved by the Board of Health. Okay, very good. Jenny, I'm still wondering, what are we supposed to do about our Three Hill Street public hearing? Can we open it and have a discussion, but then continue it without Steve?
Well, he'd have to watch the video, right? And get up.
Right, he could watch the video and then he would be able to vote, right?
Yeah.
But I know the folk here are eager to at least get this process started. So if we could, I think that would be a very good idea. Okay, so Lynn, can you read the notice?
This was published in the Salem News July 21st and 28th. Notice is hereby given that the Topsfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing during a Zoom planning board meeting Wednesday, August 6th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Instructions will be on the posted agenda on how to join the meeting via Zoom to consider the application of Lauren Carvalho, I think I said that right, Lauren, for premises located at 30 Main Street, requesting site plan review.
Lynn, we're doing Three Hill Street.
Oh, I'm so sorry. All right. The beginning is the same. Notice is hereby given that the Topsfield Planning Board will hold the public hearing during a Zoom planning board meeting to consider the application of Michael Dunn for premises located at Three Hill Street, Topsfield. Requesting a scenic road permit in the chapter 197 Scenic Roads. Martha A. Morrison, Chairman, Topsfield Planning Board.
Great, thank you. Okay, Michael, would you like to tell us about your scenic road plans?
Yeah, so we wanted to take apart 12 feet of the rock wall on Hill Street because we're anticipating a lot of construction vehicles. So out of respect for Donna Page who lives on Brad Street, we wanted to access parking on the front lawn and just keep as much off of Brad Street lane as possible. And then after construction, we would put the wall back.
Right, and I see you want to leave a six-foot opening and because that would tie in with some pavers so that the the property owners can walk out, you know, through a permanent opening on Two Hill Street?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. Okay. Okay, well, typically.
Well, no, you're, they're, their front walkway would go onto their driveway. That's basically, we're reconfiguring the driveway, but it's still off of Brad Street lane. But on Hill Street, we're just taking 12 feet of that wall apart to park on the front lawn. Then after construction, that 12 feet would go, would go back. So there wouldn't be any access to Hill Street. It would just go back the way it is now.
Oh, on the plan, it says there's a six-foot wide wall opening.
Yeah, Martha?
Yes?
Excuse, Martha, Ben Nutter, I can help with that. Good evening, thanks. Mike is correct about opening up the wall 12 feet. And Mike, what we, what we are planning on, because the mailbox is right out there close to one of those big oak trees, just going to leave an opening so that when our clients walk out, Matt or Becky, to get the mail, they won't be climbing over the rebuilt stone wall. So, yeah, you're, you're correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And there's a nice set of pavers coming out so that they can walk on the pavers out through the opening, you know, on Hill Street, right, six-foot wide?
Yes.
Right, okay, that's what I thought it was. Now, typically, we ask that any stones that are not going to be replaced be used somewhere else. Can you use these, the six foot of stone to reinforce the existing wall in some way?
Definitely.
Okay, okay, and the other issue I gather is that some of this is, I'm told, is in the, is under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, some of the wall, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you follow the red line on the site plan? It comes through corner of the house and over by where it says Hill for Hill Street?
Right.
Yes, so the last, oh, I suppose that's probably 75 to 100 feet along the stone wall, that is within the 100-foot wetland buffer.
Not the part that's being touched.
Correct.
Okay, very good. That's, that's good to know.
Okay. Sorry. Excuse me, sorry, this is Michelle Cameron from Ben Nutter's office as well. I just want to make sure it's noted that the wall is, the intent is to rebuild the wall as well, to repair it.
Right.
The whole wall.
Right.
Okay.
Like the whole wall, like Meredith Farm style, or?
Well, we haven't gotten into great detail on that, not, not exactly as Tim did at Meredith Farm. I would, I would suggest it's going to be lower than that and a farmer, loose, loose-laid farmer stone wall. And I think if Matt wants to, if our client Matt would like to offer any thoughts too, please do. But that's generally the premise, the wall that's in the rear yard is a simple, dry-laid stone wall. And this one would be similar to that, but likely a little bit taller than the wall in the rear yard.
Right, so I guess I was asking that a little bit, not just because it's gorgeous, but, you know, I know that with their rebuild, they dug down, they had a base put in and I assume that would go along, you know, it passed into the wetland buffer zone, right?
Yes.
Are we going to, is that, are we going to be doing like a base and all that too, and earthwork, or?
We expect Will Leroy will be doing the work and Mike, by all means, jump in. You've worked with Will as well, but when he's done work with us before, if there are really large rocks that are already embedded well into the grade, more than likely leave those as they are. But locations where it's more tumbled apart, almost certainly be some modest excavation and some crushed stone put underneath the reconstructed stone wall. Mike, would you expect that's consistent with your experience with Will?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, that's my experience with Will as well. So the area that's in the ConsComs area, you, you're going to be rebuilding that too, right?
Yes.
Right, okay, so you will need to have their permission to do anything in that area.
Yes.
And I understand you're filing with them or you have filed with them?
Michelle, I believe we've already filed with the ConsCom, right?
I don't, I don't believe it's been filed yet.
Okay, it has not.
But the intent is to file, yes.
Well, from our point of view, you know, we're just saying, we worry about the aesthetics and the preservation of the stone wall.
Right.
This is, you know, this is, you know, a perfectly normal request, you know, we, you know, this is a very straightforward matter. And so I would leave it to you to be able to deal with the ConsCom about when you can do work on that stone wall. But from our point of view, there are no trees being, you know, taken down. There's, you know, the intent is to restore the wall. You will use the, whatever leftover stones, you know, to help repair the wall. So that's a typically, you know, normal request, you know, from us. Okay, so any other members have any comments about this?
No.
Okay.
I would, I would just add, just like everything else we voted on tonight, the content sent, that's been sent ahead of time, which also included like photographs of the wall. All of that stuff is really helpful, helps us, helps me arrive here prepared with lots of information.
Right, yes. Yes, this is, well, you know, an excellent submittal. Now, our only problem is that we cannot vote on this tonight because we do not have a super majority. And I'm very unhappy about that. But I think Jenny will, you know, back me up on that. Is that right, Jenny?
Yeah.
No, so what we're going to have to do is to continue this. Steve is going to have to watch, you know, the video and attest to the fact that he has done so and that we can actually conduct the vote at the next meeting. But as I say.
Or Greg.
Jenny?
Steve or Greg, Steve or Greg?
Or Greg, yes, either Steve.
Both of them.
Whoever, whoever's available. So of course, we'll have both of them at the next meeting, I'm sure. And I'm very sorry for this delay, but there really isn't anything we can do about it. So, very sorry, folks.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to have a motion to continue this hearing to September meeting? And Lynn, what is that date?
November, sorry, September 3rd.
September 3rd, okay, Zilly?
Sorry, I didn't realize we had to do all the dates and details, so I am so moved, as you stated.
Okay, to September.
Second.
Okay, Jenny, second, okay, all in favor, Zilly?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
And I say aye, so this is continued to the beginning of September. We thank you for the details and I'm sure it will be a lovely project once we can approve it. Okay.
Nice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, now we have 30 Main Street. Now, Lynn, you can read 30 Main Street.
I'm saying back and forth because we get moving it. So this was published in the Salem News July 21st and 28th. Notice is hereby given that the Topsfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing during a Zoom planning board meeting Wednesday, August 6th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Instructions will be on the posted agenda on how to join the meeting via Zoom to consider the application of Lauren Carvalho for premises located at 30 Main Street, requesting site plan review, so like Article 9, Section 9.05 of the Topsfield zoning bylaw. The opening of a daycare center for children aged one month to six years. Martha A. Morrison, Chairman, Topsfield Planning Board.
Okay, well, here we go. Okay, for everyone's interest, our site plan review for this project is relatively limited. This is a use that is allowed by law in any district under the Dover Amendment and additions that talk about daycare centers. So the use is perfectly legal. I will add that it's a welcome use, that there is need for daycare and childcare. And I think that this, I believe Lauren is kind of a second section. uh, section you already have, uh, thriving daycare center over in Hamilton, and so that this would be your second one. Um, and clearly this is, you know, responding to need, uh, that parents have in the entire area. So um, uh, let me personally welcome you, you know, to Topsfield. Uh, I think it's a great, a great development. Um, our concerns really have to do only with parking and, you know, any traffic flow. I understand that you are not interested in pursuing the playground at this point, um, which would have been much more complicated. Um, but for the traffic and parking, um, silly and Jenny, did you have a chance to take a look at it? You know, I mean, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about a parking lot, uh, that is very large, uh, that we, you know, received memory, uh, tells us that there are a certain number of spots in each bank of parking behind each of the islands. Um, and so our, our approach when, uh, another applicant wanted, you wanted to use this spot was just to say, well, um, okay, um, it used to serve the gift horse and they needed X number of spots. And it's basically the same number of spots as the gift horse used, you know, so um, you need, um, I think you, Lauren, you said that you need a certain number, uh, for early childhood? How many spots?
Um, according to the laws that I found online, I require one spot for every employee that I have. And then one spot for every twelve licensed, um, children I have enrolled in the program. So my license is varying between forty-eight or forty-nine, depending on what the state approves. We're aiming for the forty-nine, but ultimately we'll settle for the forty-eight, which would require four spots for children to be dropped off, uh, making a total of sixteen spots required.
Right. Um, and so in theory, um, there are, if we, you go by received memory, there were fourteen spots right in the bank, right in front of you. And then there certainly are an additional couple of spots, uh, Linda's, here we go. Um, this was a, a previous, you know, this is based on a previous plan. So if you look at where the gift horse is, then the, the parking right in front of it, you know, basically takes care of most of what you need. And then the next one over, you know, can provide the other spots. Any questions, silly?
Yeah, I have a question. I, um, first of all, welcome, hi, and uh, welcome to Topsfield. Um, I, I'm just a little uncertain, the, the twelve spots marked in that like yellow-orange color.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is not, that's not how the parking is set up at this time, like the parking spots over there don't look like that.
So yes, I was there today and I was a little confused because I've never been over to that side of the parking lot. I was just provided with this one. And I went over and I was like, oh, those parking spots are the other way. So I wasn't sure if this was an outdated form or if it had recently been changed or what happened. But basically, Peter wanted just to ensure like ease of parking for all other tenants who have quick in-and-out services. He wanted my staff to be parked as far away as possible from the building, just since their cars would be parked there for eight, nine hours a day. Um, so he had me just put it at the furthest spot on the list, so I'm not sure if this is an outdated form, but.
Yeah, it, it is a little, but as I say, these, these, the spaces that are in orange are, uh, you know, they are in the opposite, you know, they're, the, the other way. Uh, you also have, there are a lot of spaces, um, uh, over by the cleaners, you know, along the fence by the cleaners. Um, and that those are rarely used, you know, those are rarely used. Um, so I think, um, at least my impression and the way we dealt with the previous applicant was to say, if there clearly is enough parking within the lot to accommodate your needs. Now, because it's hard to see where the parking actually is, you know, that given there are no lines on, you know, there's no way of telling. Uh, it really is up to the, um, the people using the parking lot to sort themselves out. And that's how it has been done. Uh, my initial thought was that it would be great if you could have your staff park over by the fence, you know, by the cleaners. Um, so I think that's hardly ever used or rarely cars there. Uh, but it really is up to Peter as to where he really, he wants you to park. Uh, so, you know, we defer to your landlord, you know, in terms of where to go.
Okay.
My other question though, of course, has to do with, um, so you say that, uh, people park and then walk their children in?
Yes.
And do you, so I, when do the, do the kids all arrive and arrive on the same tally?
So I allow for flexible scheduling and, um, different drop-offs based on parent need. So typically, we have four, four, three to five families getting dropped off in fifteen-minute increments, so we open at seven AM. And our latest drop-off is actually nine fifteen. So it's a pretty, like, fluid but easy flow of, of families. Um, and we stagger them so that we can have time to talk to each individual parent at drop-off and not make it seem like our rushed situation. Um, so typically, we do not have more than five families getting dropped off at one time. Um, but it could be, you know, someone's running late, so there's six, but typically parents are able to park, collect their belongings from the car, grab their little one and come inside, talk for three to five minutes with the staff, and then head back to their car.
Right, okay. Would, any other questions, uh, board members?
Um, yeah, again, I wondered, would, would there be, so, well, two questions. I'll start with uh, the broader one, which is, so what we're looking at now is just to let us know that there's enough parking. But it doesn't, it doesn't mean that those are necessarily the specific spots you have to use, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Um, how, at the, on the flip side of that, for drop-off, would you be possibly um, having up to four spots that are marked, like from seven to nine AM, these are reserved for? So that you don't have families having to cross a parking lot if it's a busy day at the bagel bin or something?
Personally, I would love that. Um, that's not something that I've asked of Peter yet. He's been very accommodating and wonderful so far, so I'm, I'm not seeing if that might, I don't think it would be a problem with him. Um, however, again, it's not really my point to say. I don't feel, um, it would be a dangerous situation to have a family park and, and walk across to, like walk across the parking lot a little bit to get to the building. Um, you know, they'd be walking with their parent, it'd be a safe situation. Um, so, and I don't foresee any families having an issue with that, but if we could have four marked spots in the front, that'd be wonderful to me, too.
Uh, you know, I might add, uh, and that this might be an issue for your licensing. Um, there are no designated handicap spots at that end of the parking lot. Um, I, I believe the handicap spots are all down at the other end. Um, you know, there are signs sort of indicating that these are handicap spots. Um, and I don't know, if you're speaking with Peter, you might ask, is there some way to get a designated handicap spot down at that end of the parking lot? Uh, I think it would be, um, it would be an improvement, you know, you may not need it, but, uh, other people might, you know?
Okay, yeah, I can definitely mention it.
Yeah, I, I think that would be good. Okay, Jenny, do you have any comments? Do we still have Jenny, I hope?
Yep, just got to unmute, no comments. This looks great.
Okay, great. Well, I think this is going to be a lovely addition. Uh, before we, uh, close this, there are, there may be some abutters or citizens, you know, interested. Uh, Tim, I see you're there. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Uh, yeah, no, just welcome. So I own the Topsfield Station, which is the big red building near there, and so, uh, welcome, Lauren, great.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
Yeah, nice to meet you. Maybe I'll say hello sometime when you're in there, but uh, yeah, so I'm, I just wanted to hear this and, uh, obviously I'm neighbors to Matt's thing, I think that's great too, so. Just adding some, onto express support.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Uh, is there anyone else who would like to comment?
And express some resident support. We'd love to have a new daycare in town.
As you can see.
That was better than mine, that was good.
It's always better when there's babies.
Okay, uh, anyone else? No, well, Lauren, I hope you're feeling welcomed, you know?
Definitely.
Um, I think this is a lovely addition to the downtown. Um, so we need a motion to, if no one else has anything else to say, we need a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Very good.
Second.
Jenny, okay, all in favor? Jenny?
Aye.
Zilly?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And, uh, now I'd like a motion, uh, to approve the site plan review, the site plan uh, for, uh, thirty Main Street.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second, silly?
Okay, yes.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Jenny?
Aye.
Zilly?
And I, I would just, my eye is confirming that it, the drawing, the orange marks don't mean you have to park there.
Okay. Okay, very good. Okay, all right, so I think we have, uh, this all taken care of. Uh, Lauren, again, welcome and congratulations. We wish you great, good luck, uh, and we'll see you around.
Thank you so much. I'm very excited to join the community.
Great, okay, thanks. Um, okay, well, um, I think we don't need to vote on minutes because we have, um, we don't have everyone here. Uh, but I would like to mention, um, and I don't know that it is made. Um, I always preface this, I say, when in the course of human events, uh, it becomes necessary for the planning board to review its forms, its rules, its regulations, uh, and shutter even the subdivision control rules and regulations. Um, Lynn has put together a, a summary of everything that, um, you know, she's identified. Um, and much of it is just editorial, uh, that there are, you know, words missing or words, you know, shouldn't be there. Um, and also distribution procedures to boards that don't exist anymore. Uh, and then we do have ma- material coming from MAPC about our stormwater regulations, um, that we have to do something to be in compliance with MS four. And, uh, we have a couple of things that we might want to add. So, um, this is, you know, as I say, this means that we have to read these documents. We have to review these documents. It is, I can tell you, tedious, but it is necessary. And I know Jenny already spotted, you know, one thing, um, right off the bat. Uh, so, uh, Lynn, have you already circulated that?
No, I, I'll send it out to everybody. It's both the summary of what needs to get changed and then, um, four sets of rules and regulations, three application forms and a fee schedule, so there's a lot to look at.
Yes, um, and, and you know, these things have to be done every so many years, um, and we haven't done it for a while. Um, and so it's that time.
Yep.
And it's a good time to do it, to get it cleaned up, um, you know, while we have time, beginning of this year, you know, we'll have time to work on this. Okay, so be prepared, you know, and get out your sharp pencils. Okay, um, so with that said, I think we have covered a number of matters in record time. Uh, but that is thanks to Lynn's organization, and it is thanks to our reviewing engineer who really pushed to be able to get all of these stormwater, um, you know, plans reviewed and improved and changed and fixed, uh, so that we could move them forward, um, tonight. So thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I get that.
Anything else that we should talk about? Nope, I know Jenny's got her hands full. Yeah, Jenny, thank you so much for joining.
No problem, sorry. My hotspot wasn't good enough for a, for video, but.
Well, I know this.
I'd slow everybody down.
Well, anyway, okay, so I think a motion to adjourn is in order?
So moved.
You got it, Jenny, yay.
Okay, all in favor? Zilly?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
And I vote aye, very good, thanks very much for being here.